I wouldn't remember. Thank you.
Just one?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah.
Your motion to open the meeting?
Go ahead, sir.
All right, we'll say it.
Make a motion of a meeting. First, second.
I didn't hear you say.
Did you say you made them all or you?
I requested them all. All in favor?
Aye. I know.
First on the agenda is public comment. Any public comments? The none. Approval of the meeting minutes of October 7th have been rejected and canceled. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll sit with them.
Good.
It looked to me like there was one of the motions. I think it was motion two. It does not look like we actually took a vote on it. I'm gonna have to try to pull it up here real quick. Other than that, they were fine with me, but it looked like there were two motions with one vote at the end. But I also noticed some inconsistencies with the two votes.
Which one? Safety brand, now some disability?
The poll here.
That was a public hearing.
You see the two motions?
There would have been two motions. One to take a motion to approve it and one motion to close the public hearing.
Do you see how there's only one vote? No, do you not see that?
No, I see it. So, motion three made by selectmen to close the public hearing. Second, see if we can tell you unanimously unanimous, Chair. Well, under motion two, there just isn't a vote there.
We need to have, we need to have a motion to approve the poll. So it's probably due to take no?
It's just the type of thing that you need to add one under line 29 and just put a...
I just don't remember who made the motion. It means I can't see what can people have in the video.
Yeah.
Other than that?
Good.
That was fine.
Good.
Good.
Sure.
Just trying to be accurate.
I make a motion that we approve the October 9th and November 2nd meeting minutes as amended by Mr. Mattalian. Brett Simonis? Aye.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Okay. Let's get out of the air. We have guest presentations, public hearing, banana. My honor, October 19th?
I think you said the 7th, but I think you might be on the wrong issue.
I am on agenda.
Because I thought it was the 19th. Yeah.
It's your bill, Bill, or our bill, George.
Yes.
Not, I don't have.
They have all the information.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources contacted the town because they're interested in purchasing the basically development rights from Johnny Lindquist and Carol Mulan, right?
Yep.
I guess I'm sort of so Carol and John.
Chris, excuse me.
So, yep. I know it was Carol and Johnny.
Essentially, the owners of Town Line Dairy.
Yes.
So you guys must have made an application to Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources?
Yes.
And they approved it. So in any case. Amdar is willing to purchase the development rights to permanently protect that land for agricultural purposes. However, one of the conditions is that the town participated in the purchase of the APR, as it's called. And they were looking for the town to contribute $12,000. Conservation Commission voted at one of its last meetings to fund the $12,000 from its conservation fund. So the money that is needed from the town is coming from the Conservation Commission's conservation fund. So that takes care of that issue. The selectmen will need to execute the APR when it's finally put in place because the town will have an interest in the APR. And so before we committed to Amdar, the town wanted to move forward with this. We wanted to be sure that you guys had a chance to ask any questions you might have about the process and so on.
So this was the selling of the development.
Right. Essentially, the land will be, the use of the land will be restricted down to agriculture.
As it is. Which we don't have too many farms. And it's a working farm, which there are hardly any. I would like to see it stay a working farm.
Yeah, I mean, totally. I couldn't agree more. And I think that, you know, it. For me, it's even fundamentally like it's private property. And the owners of the private property are making the decision about how to handle it. Right. So we have no interest in it. The fact that we have to pay $12,000, I get it, but that's, you know, for, for what we're doing to support a local farms, support a local business, and, you know, preserve this land as a working farm in perpetuity. I think it's, you know, certainly good for Conservation Commission. Don't have any questions about it.
How many acres of land?
Twenty-eight point two.
I don't have any problem. You have any questions, Steve?
Just curious, the letter was a little bit ambiguous. It didn't get into, you know, the long term. I guess I'd say positive. In fact, it seems like, you know, a great opportunity, you know, as opposed to, you know, just we have a lot of open space in town. But here's a situation where it's actually, you know, that land will be earmarked for agriculture. So I think that's, you know, that's correct. So I guess I would say, do you foresee any downside? What happens in year 10 and year 12?
So I think from our perspective, we don't see a downside. It's our primary goal. I mean, Town Line Dairy Farm is known in the area to have one point probably engulfed probably 300 or 400 acres of farm land in option. That's gone, right? Turf families, property. As far as getting anything handed down to us, that wasn't the case. So sure, we're sympathetic to saving what's left, but we're also working it and we're working it very hard in the last five or six years. So to take away the building rights. It's never really been an issue for us. It's been more about keeping the farm arm. And this last piece of the puzzle is going to allow us to invest more into the business part of it. You know, it's going to save us money right off the bat and it's going to allow us to grow that farm to what we believe it can be in calendar. So. The struggle's real. It's been a long road to get where we are. But, you know, we've, we've done pretty well, starting with nothing. Tell people, you know, if you're born into farm land and equipment, you can make a decent living. We weren't born into either. We just happened to come from groups that had it. So it's been definite learning experience. And again, last piece of the puzzle. If we can do this, I think we kind of consider ourselves in a group where we can actually make a decent living and actually become a bigger contributor to the community. That's kind of, I think that's where we're coming from. That's where we've always come from all along, is we want to contribute to the community and this will allow us to do more of that.
I applaud Stu because farm life is a hot life.
Yeah, sure.
That's true. True. And, oh, the only, just as a follow-up. Obviously, as we look forward in time, in perpetuity is something we talked about, what happens 25, 30 years from now.
Sure.
If you pass deed along to the property, you know, how does that work?
Well, we hopefully have our succession, our kids, which, you know, is obviously the. The, the idea that they don't want to go into this business and do the same things. But at that point, the groundwork is going to be laid for you successfully driving businesses someone could buy into at that point. But that's not the goal of the goal. You know, my son would be the fifth generation to farm that land if he does so, ultimately. You know, she's the fourth. My family comes, you know, out of Pennsylvania, whatever. So all in all, you know, if we can keep a family tradition alive, I mean, that would be fantastic. If not, I think it'll be a buy it wash if someone to buy in and keep it going.
Along with that, they buy the restriction.
Yep.
It will always stay a farm.
Yes.
So it's a little different from 61A in the federal position, not to promote?
Yes.
But it can be deeded and sold. It just would always stay.
Agricultural.
Right.
Any other questions?
We have a question. Is Bill, how much is in the long-term for Conservation Commission right now?
My recollection is in. Mike and I think Chris are both on from the Conservation Commission. From my recollection, it was 35,000. So there's plenty of money in Conservation Fund to cover.
Okay.
So it's not going to be that.
Right.
I concur with Bill. There's around 27,000 in the Conservation Fund right now. So there's plenty to cover. Thank you.
So are we ready for our motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve and send support for the APR sale of the land Town Line Dairy Farm.
All those in favor?
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. unanimous action?
Right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yep. Good feeling. It's huge. It's good for us, too. It is.
When I was a kid, Town Line Dairy, all the milk in school was from Town Line Dairy. Yeah. That's right. My brother-in-law worked on the farm from the time he was nine years old or about 18.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. Good luck.
We get out of here. We're welcome. Very welcome to sit. Or go beat the animals.
Go, you're asking my advice, go beat the animals.
All the champagne while you're beating the animals.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you guys. Thank you.
Yes.
Guys, have a good night.
Have a good night. Alcoholic relations.
Take care. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is meeting board discussion items and 5.1.1, discuss formation of lakes and ponds committee.
So I believe Marcela is going to seat to the board to review on this. This was another question current.
Okay.
Marcela, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So what we wanted to do. You're realizing that they, that the management of our waterways, lakes and ponds involves a lot of different parties and a lot of different interests. But we. A handful of us thought it might be a good idea to start a lakes and ponds committee to manage the vegetation for one, monitor the water quality, and possibly involve abutters who have an interest, people who live on the waterways. So the idea would be to form a committee consisting of the various interested parties, the REITCOM, somebody from CONCOM, somebody, you know, who represents the, the abutters community and any, you know, any other interested parties. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the, the, it was a letter sent to Derek, or he was CC'd on it regarding what, what I, how, how a lakes and ponds committee would serve. And I'm, you, I might disappear, but I, let me just call that up on my tablet here and see if I can give you a synopsis. What's the, I guess in the past, the management of the lakes and ponds was overseen by Aquatic Weed Control, and that's a committee, commission that has disbanded. The, the goal would be to implement approaches and strategies, I'm quoting here, to maintain and potentially improve the quality of Upton's lakes and ponds. The committee could potentially include representatives from various stakeholders. And the roles and responsibilities would include developing and obtaining funding for surveys and, and then devising strategies for prioritizing lake and pond management, apply for grants, distribute educational materials, and then also work with the DPW. So this is, this would be a group that would have quite a few responsibilities, quite a few, you know, things to tackle. So, and it doesn't really fall under any other committee. So that's why the thought to have a lakes and ponds commission or committee would, made some sense. So we're approaching you to see if we could form such a committee. And I, I know that I'm not, I'm overcommitted as it is, so I'm not able to serve on the committee. But I did agree to jumpstart this process. And I know of at least three people who are interested. We haven't really talked to all the various entities who might be interested, such as somebody from REITCOM or some of the abutters to the waterways. But I think that if we get word out, there might be a good deal of interest. We hear an awful lot on the Conservation Commission from people who live on the waterways and people who use the lakes and ponds. And they have a vested interest in this. So I think that there might be a, a community of people who would very much want to participate.
So Derek, can we put out a request for applications for the committee?
We can do that. Marcela, could you, I'm looking at the attachment you sent on November 1st and it keeps saying it's corrupt. Can, can you send me another version of that so we advertise this committee?
Oh.
And get the, the goals out for this committee?
Sure. Do you want, I can send it as a word?
Yeah.
Yeah. Send it as a word.
Okay. Do you need me to do that right now or would you like, I could try to do that now, but?
Whenever you have time. No, no rush.
Okay. I'm not sure I can do it simultaneously with being on a meeting, so. But I'll get that to you tonight.
And then Derek can put out the request for applications for the committee?
That sounds great.
Satisfactory?
Terrific.
So how, what do we think in the number of members should be on this? Because I think Marcela makes a strong point about maybe someone from the recreation, maybe the commission or, you know, the staff person. She mentioned Public Works has a heavy hand in it. In fact, we had an article in a meeting to ask for initial $25,000.
And then the two.
We control early. The Board of Health, I think, should be considered as well. They are responsible for the water quality at Kwanah Beach every summer for bathing, the bathing beach purposes.
So that's four, right?
So this, REITCOM, Board of Health, Public Works. And then, so I'm trying to think kind of generally. Conservation, yeah. And then abutters.
That's seven. Yep, that be good?
Yep.
I'm going to have a couple of questions about the committee itself before, it sounds like we're, we're kind of already ready to put it together. But right now, those responsibilities for those waterways are being handled by either the Board of Health or the DPW. So I guess.
Or REITCOM.
Or REITCOM. Right. So I guess my question would be, is there any particular part of what's happening right now that you think is being overlooked? Because I'm hesitant to always set up another committee when essentially what this committee is going to do is take 25% of what REITCOM does, 30% of the responsibilities away from Board of Health, and then another, you know, coordinate with the DPW is actually doing the actual hiring of who's treating the water, you know, for aquatic weeds or algae, bacteria, or what other, other issues may be. So, you know, is there something that you feel is being overlooked or, I'm not really sure. There's something I'm missing.
I'm not sure I'd say it's being overlooked, but the communication between these various entities is very spotty. And for one committee that has representatives of all these different groups in one place would probably streamline things. Like, for example, we wanted to do aquatic weed control, like Wildwood this year, but it took a while for the paperwork to get done. Then it, you know, it just, had there been a committee who was responsible for that, you know, I, I'm not sure why the, that committee disbanded that was doing the, the aquatic weed control management. But it's no longer in existence and that was, that would be one of the primary things I think this committee would be doing. But I think it's a way for everybody who has a stake here to be in one room or one, be on one meeting at the same time and communicating with each other directly so that processes wouldn't get bogged down. Plus, they would have a role in finding some funding to do some of the work that needs to be done. And right now, you know, we're kind of stretched thin and adding, you know, adding more to, like, the, more to the DPW's load of work and more to the various volunteer committees' work. I think that it would be much more efficient and effective to have a separate committee to do this.
Because I'm all.
So, well, I think what she's trying, what you're trying to do, Marcela, is to coordinate everything so that we can get the paperwork in on time and things can get done on time.
Correct. Yes.
Right?
Why do you think, right?
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Sorry. So, yeah, so my, my take on this, right, and I fully hear what you're saying, see, we don't need to, it, it, we're not solving an acute problem. I think it's more sort of a systemic opportunity, right? Because you've got like DPW that does nine million things and this is off to the side of their desk. You've got REITCOM that's doing nine million things and this is off to the side of the desk. You've got CONCOM, right? You've got all these different entities that, Board of Health, right? Like, they're managing COVID, right? They're nothing about ponds and lakes and weeds and, and, and pond. So I think it's just a question of bringing focus to what needs to be done. And I don't, I don't see it at all as taking away any responsibilities of any of the people that own that. I think it's more a way to create focus on this specific area of need for the town and letting some volunteers do that to free up some of the administrative capacity of those other entities that have a ton of stuff going on. And then allowing this group to sort of focus on it and also just sort of let them know like, okay, we need this. We want your opinion on this, what's happening with this? And to try to sort of keep things moving along. I haven't seen it as taking anything away from the town.
I understand that. I think that I look at it and I say, at the end of the day, I appreciate your volunteerism, Marcela. I don't want to be too negative, but I look at it and I say, at the end of the day, aquatic re-control, hiring, you know, these processes really have to be done by the DPW. You can't have a committee filling out documents to hire somebody to spray a lake.
Well, I think that's what the committee would do. They might present a, like, an application to somebody that's bringing before the committee, which the DPW would still be proud of. With the conservation and those. I don't think anybody is going to take anything away from them or any authority away from them. It's just to help them out, get the paperwork done and then present it to them. And then if there's something wrong or something can be tweaked, they could tweak it. But for them to have to sit down and write out any applications that they might need, it takes time. And like Brett said, they're doing nine million things already.
But that's still their role.
And it will, it will continue to be their role. It's just that they would prepare the paperwork and then have their meeting. If DPW disagrees with it, they can say it right then and there. Or if they want to tweak it, they can, they can do it at the committee meeting.
If you want to have your DPW director sitting on the meeting with ponds and lakes, ponds, lakes and streams committee to discuss a lot of weed controllers that we're going to be using.
Or a misdesigning.
And that's not the only thing this committee would be doing. I mean, there, there's management of, you know, we've, we've had discussions over how to ma, exactly how to manage the weed control, whether we do it with chemicals right now. There, there are other options and they're, they're worth discussing and they may be better long-term options for managing the weed control. Water quality is the other thing. That's something that I know the Board of Health looks at. And the, the other stakeholders being the, the abutters and the users of the waterways. You know, they, I, I think that they should have some, you know, partake with that, partake in that process.
So I just did a quick Google, just so we understand what we're talking about here. This is from the Massachusetts Congress of Lake and Pond Associations. The purpose of the Massachusetts Congress and Lake and Pond Associations, and in this case, the Upton Lakes and Ponds Association, is to preserve, protect, maintain, and enhance the environmental, aesthetic, recreational, and economic values of lakes and ponds and to promote watershed management. So that, I would say, is what this committee will do. It's not about doing paperwork or instructing the DPW to direct things. It's an organization that's meant to do and play this role for the community with a focus on the lakes and ponds in town. Support it.
I guess my, my only other question, and again, if you both support it, we'll just move on. My only other question is, as we look in the, our neighboring towns, who else would have a committee land? Does Raffin have one? Does Worcester have one? Does Northbridge have one? North Borough have one?
What's the matter with being the first?
Too much governance.
Governments. I mean, it's, it's, it's trying to protect the environment.
We have mass wildlife. I'm telling you, there's a lot of, there's a lot of oversight on your waters, a lot more than you think. There's mass wildlife. There's obviously, they're testing for mosquitoes. They have to down through different branch, central mass mosquito controllers. There's a lot of different entities looking over waterways. You folks want to set up another committee? No, that's hot.
I make a motion that we establish a lakes and ponds committee for the town of Upton with seven members, including a member from REITCOM, Conservation, DPW, Board of Health, and three at-large positions.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm a majority action. Thank you, Marcela.
Is your DPW member going to have to be a member? Are we going to do that? Like I say, Dennis, for instance, he wants to serve as a community status.
The same way we would with ThinkCom.
But what if, what if they do, you know, or say we are not a member or not a resident of the town?
They represent the town and they're an employee of the town.
Well, it's the first thing I say.
You don't know that.
You can add it to your resume. You can add it to your resume. See, you have the frontier of governance in the state of Massachusetts. Actually, you're not. So. Sorry.
There we go. Take that out of the way. They get back, yeah. We've got too many things on our resume now. We need another one. Need another committee.
Thank you, Marcela.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, 5.1.2, discussed request to change of DPW feasibility committee to DPW building committee. Wouldn't you have any?
Just that this request came through the chair, Rick Weyer, who as you all know is the chair of the DPW feasibility committee. They were trying to streamline their efforts and requested that the DPW feasibility committee be, for lack of a better term, promoted to the DPW building committee based upon the. upon the favorable vote at town meeting to go ahead and move forward with schematic design and talk about the DPW facility. So that is the question that's going to flow into the seat.
So what do they want? Transfer the feasibility study to the building?
Yeah, so they would, so there's five members of the DPW feasibility committee. I mean, Rick LeWier, Andy Leonard, Jonathan Mullen, Dan Lazars, and Dave Ryan. Dennis Westgate serves on the committee as a, as a user in subject matter, but he's not a committee member then, he doesn't, he does not have voting privileges. So the, so again, they, they were hoping that the board of selectmen would just appoint them to the DPW building committee so that they can start their work.
We, we didn't do that with the community center, I don't believe.
No.
We went out for applications because we were looking for expertise, engineers, architects, and that. I, I think, my personal opinion is I think we should follow that process.
Yeah, I agree totally. I think we should, um, you know, re-caps it, re-advertise it. You know, different people may be interested, there may be different qualifications. I think we should expand it to a seven-member committee, given that it's transitioning to a building committee. I think now is the time to do it. We just approved 250 something, a thousand dollars to do the design, so that feels like it's worth, you know, having some additional expertise brought to the table. I think we should include somebody and, and target people that have some sort of relevant experience in the, in the DPW space, whether it's someone that's served in DPW as, you know, worked in municipal projects like this, whether it's DPW-specific or other municipal projects, as well as the designees from whatever the, the groups represented on the current DPW feasibility committee. Seems like it would make most sense.
Yeah, at this point.
Do you agree with that, Steve?
I agree. At this point, I would not be in favor of just taking this committee and counting it forward, moving it forward to a building committee. And I, personally, I think it's a little bit early. I don't think we're ready to form a building committee yet. Uh, so I think that's way ahead of schedule here. But, uh, yes, the committee should be expanded, as both of you have mentioned.
Any other questions? You'll put the application requests out there, Eric?
Yeah, so we'll advertise, like we typically do, but every day is, and we'll make appointments and notify the five members on feasibility committees to the board of, so recently the applications that they're even interested.
Right.
Okay.
Got a motion?
I make a motion that we dissolve the DPW feasibility committee and create a new DPW building committee with seven members to be re-advertized and appointed as soon as possible.
I guess my only question is, do we want to dissolve that committee before we form the next committee?
I think so.
Yeah, that's what I think matters. Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Technology, point of technology committee member? Are you here?
Mr. Bruno is here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There you are.
It's your request to be appointed to the technology committee?
Correct, yep.
And did you want to give us any background or?
Sure.
Tell us about yourself?
Yep, so my, um, I was a computer engineering degree in college, started out as a programmer, moved into IT in about 1997 on the application side. Worked my way up through that, went my way up through that side, and then moved on to infrastructure. And so now I manage infrastructure and applications. My last company, I was a director of IT, and this current company, I'm a senior manager of IT. It is slightly bigger company. Been doing it for many years, I think I could contribute quite well to this.
And we have a position open? Yes. Any questions?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you for volunteering your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, you have a motion?
Uh, I would make a motion that we appoint Rob Bruno to the technology committee for a term of, is it a one-year or three-year? One-year?
You usually do it till the end, till the next appointment, then we, yeah.
Yeah, we make that motion subject to the next appointment scheduled.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Is there one open seat on that committee or more than one?
There's, now there's two. There weren't three.
There are, there's some seats.
Oh, wow. Next on the agenda, five point two, approve various road races. First one is the 5K Spooky Run Road Race.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the application for the Mandamuffin Education Foundation's spooky run 5K to begin on October 23rd at 10:00 a.m. Registration starting at 8:30 a.m. And estimated finish time of 11:00 a.m. Uh, the approximate number of people, 175 to 200, recognizing that they are setting up to have the appropriate police and EMS on site.
Is it October 23rd and November?
And what the date is wrong, though?
It says October 23rd, 2022.
Oh, 2022?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Oh, next, oh.
They like to go on and add a year on the brand.
It's probably forward 10 months, 11 months.
Yeah, they usually do.
I think they'd actually.
I agree. I like that date seems weird, but.
I was going to say.
We'll send in the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Five point, two point two, Nipmuck Youth Softball Road Race.
You want to take this one, Steve?
Check the dates first.
Oh, 19?
22, okay. Uh, would make a motion that we approve the road race application for the Nipmuck Youth Softball. Uh, the date is Saturday, March 19th, 2022, subject to all safety requirements as per the application.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Next is five point three, annual renewal licensing.
Um, I had added a blank, you know, just wanted to add two, um, applications that had come in a little bit late, but, um.
Who are they for?
One was Nal Equipment Corporation for Class Two, and the second one was the Common Bit for the Upton.
Okay, I need to recuse myself for the class one, two, and three licenses. Want to have it last separately, or I can refuse myself for all?
Not just me.
Okay. I refuse myself.
All these are all ready to go, right?
They all be, oh, except for the, no, those can add in. Add those in. There's a couple that's not on that list that we'll have to do at a later meeting because I have not received applications. But, um, we are still in the process of doing, um, um, investigations, inspections. I knew that I would. Inspections, um, so that I would ask that you make the, um, motions and contingent upon having inspections, the inspections by the Board of Health and Code Enforcement and the Treasurer Collective.
Okay.
And do we want to motion these as a block, knowing that you need to recuse yourself for the class twos, but just motion them as a block, right? We don't, it's for everyone, you know?
Yes, please.
Okay, so why don't we, you want to do everything except the class twos? Maybe you can just recuse himself from the one on Italian Motors?
Yes.
Or does?
I need to be.
You have to be out for all of them.
Okay.
You want to do the first block? I'll step out if you want to do the first block.
Yeah.
That works out?
I make the motion that we approve the class one, two, and three renewal applications contingent on successful inspections for those companies and applicants listed on this 2022 licensure renewal sheet.
Including now our equipment.
Including now our equipment, equipment for, yeah, thanks.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Majority.
Is there anyone not on here that we typically would expect to be on here?
Um, yeah, I do have two that I have not received applications from. Um, Lakeside and Precision.
Okay.
And.
Any questions?
I have not, um, had a response to that from Nipmuck. And for Steve, Common Vicks, I have not heard your response to that. Um, Stephanie's, I forget Stephanie's and Gasoline.
Okay.
But we did really good this year.
Yeah.
Track them all down, so we're having to chase down, again, those people is a lot better than previous years, so that's good. I don't have any questions on the liquor licenses or Common Vicks that appear with Upton House Pizza.
Upton House Pizza's been added to it, right?
Yeah.
So the ones that were out were, you mentioned already?
Yeah.
I'm fine with, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the 2022 license renewals for liquor licenses and Common Vick licenses contingent on successful inspections as written in this list that was submitted, with the addition of Upton House of Pizza.
Uh, with second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action? Okay, next on the agenda. Is the trust fund request?
Yeah, I just said maybe a little bit more of an update. So this one's a request by the director of library, approximately $1,500 to purchase books, this, this one, yeah. But after looking at the, the will that was left to the town, having KP review the will, and then, well, with the conversation the board of selectmen had with the trust fund commissioners, it's, and I checked with the director of the library this morning, it probably would make better sense to move this request to the trust fund commissioners, which are already engaged, and they will have this conversation on Tuesday and then circle back with the director of library, you know, to say, and this, I did tie it to the director, and he said that there is no rush to have this approved this evening, um, or even, you know, within the next couple of weeks. So, um, I don't see any need for us to take action to make this request.
It's not on the selectmen anyways, correct?
Uh, there's no mention of the board of selecting or its elected body to approve this type of request. Given the town's general bylaw that created the trust fund commission, in my opinion, probably is most appropriate of this, this will to be managed by the trust fund.
I would agree.
All right, see, I'm looking at this, I read this, the, uh, the will earlier today, and in the second paragraph, to me, it's very, very clear, "to be used annually for the purchase of books as the trustees of said library shall determine." So why would we read into it further than have the library board trustees make the recommendation to purchase books?
It's still, we're going to have to go through the trust fund because it's like, it's a will. They have to approve, but also, do they have a line item in their budget for books?
I didn't see one for books specifically. I can speak to that with you, mate. There's a materials line item which includes all of the different materials, such as books and audio books and running videos and stuff, it's included in that. Yeah, and the trustees have had discussions, where we read the law and the deed.
The will.
Arguably, the trustees do have the authority to spend, as, as outlined, have no problem calling before the trust fund commissioners to have that discussion with them?
I think that's the way it should be. We had that discussion with the trust fund commissioners, kind of saw it all the so, and I think if they went through the trust fund commissioners and got the approval, then it would be fine.
I, I'm with Steve on this one. I think it's pretty clear that it's up to the library fund trustees to make the decision about how we win and what that money should be spent on. I do think it's a gracious courtesy to the, to the trust fund commissioners to just let them know what the intent is and to get any perspective that they might have, but certainly explicitly sits with the library trustees.
So could we have a motion to transfer this request to the trust fund commissioners and go from there?
Finally, sure.
My motion?
Oh, I was going to wait. If you want to.
Uh, sure, I make a motion that we prefer the request for, um, feedback on expenditure of library trust funds to the trust fund commissioners.
Oh, then, I mean, that's also leave the library board trustees?
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous action?
It almost seemed like we wouldn't have to take any action on that request.
We did, no. Why we needed to pass the, yeah.
Now, managers report.
All right, just a few things to report. So you've probably seen a lot of progress that's been taking place over a tip project, so half of that mill, High Street, Upton's Road. Primarily, the construction has been completed this construction season. Uh, the mill and overlay has been complete, the sidewalks have been complete. The, uh, you'll see ramps and driveways, those are temporary. It's going to get us to the winter season, and then the construction will restart in the spring. They will complete the ramps and the driveways to meet the proper grading. They'll put one final, final coat on the asphalt, and then that project will be complete. So I think it'll work, going well so far with that project. I mean, certainly, it's been a lot of work by the Public Works Department. Uh, it's filled numerous phone calls from others and residents asking questions about how this project is affecting the public, so. Thank you, Bill, and Dennis. It's, it's a lot of work, and so I'm sure all will be relieved once it's completely most rated so far.
Awesome.
And then, uh, standing on the DPW topic, Dean Parker had retired yesterday, so Dean Parker worked for the town's water, wastewater division for approximately 19 years. Uh, so they had a really good send-off of Dean on Friday, so you wish Dean well in his future retirement. Uh, I wanted to bring to your attention that tomorrow night will be the first time the governor's naming project will be heard publicly in over two years. So it had been presented to the planning board on numerous occasions pre-covid, um, which primarily only maybe some abutters may have listened to it, it's in the planning board. So, um, tomorrow night, it's going to be in front of the ZVA first. Uh, they haven't cited the date yet for the planning board here, just yet. It's going to be upstairs in Little Town Hall, um, but because we're having technology problems with virtual access, we're not going to provide that. Cali is working with Paul Knoll and two at least toward that presentation.
He is able to do that.
Perfect, so that we'll be able to play it out. Uh, this is going to be a big project, so, you know, right now, it's, um, it's approximately about 160 units that are being proposed. It's 160, goodness. Um, that have been proposed, it's 55 units in the back and, and the front portion of that project is a number of, um... in the front portion of that project, it's a number of multi-unit structures. So once it goes to the ZVA, planning board will hold multiple meetings. I bring this to your attention because you remember, I believe it was December of last year, the attorney from African Company came before the board of selectmen talking about how various options to run water and sewer to those projects. They have an access point that would go underneath the train tracks coming in through some circle. That's not the ideal option. Their ideal option is running water sewer up 140 until they hit the property. But as you know, their proposal was to have some type of cost share with the town. And so, which is why the board of selectmen is gonna have a heavy hand in this conversation, because although this will go in front of the planning board for second review, and they'll deal with the aesthetics and the site layout, the board of selectmen is gonna have to probably wanna be a part of those conversations, because they can't imagine you all agreeing to a cost share if you don't agree to the project itself. So again, tomorrow will be the first time it's heard publicly, and then there'll be future public hearings with the planning board. I know the planning board, all of their meetings are being held virtually, so it's starting that time as well. But then, there's other components to that project besides this one. There's a 55 and older component, and there's, there is an affordable house component, but I'm not certain how they're proposing to meet the affordable requirement just yet. They talked about onset affordable, they also turned up the idea of moving the affordable housings to a different site in town.
That's a proposal that they just sent, only said eight off-site, affordable housing. Do they ever do the ZVA meetings online? Have they ever done that?
When they started allowing in-person meetings, they voted to keep the meetings and move them to in-person.
Right, and they don't do any online?
No, no one times that, they're so.
That begins at seven?
That's 6:30, 6:30, ZVA meets at 6:30. I think they have two hearings, so there might be, I think there's a hearing that's first, and then this one.
And all the advisors have been notified, presumably, that's part of the requirement, isn't it?
So I'm just doing the quick, it's 154 units they're proposing this time. So I think I saw the last plan, they were asking to rezone Route 140, if I'm not mistaken. I think they wanted to change the zoning on 140 from business zoning, general business GV to that's, that's what's in front of the ZVA tomorrow night. So to your point, Steve, this two zones, the front section of this project is in the GV district. And so they need to go to the ZVA tomorrow night to stop the conversation of allowing them to build residential units in that GP district. Once they get a variance approved for that, then they can proceed to the planning board for the second plan review.
So they could get a special permit tomorrow night?
In theory, they could, I mean, I would imagine.
But that's the way they're gonna, they're not gonna go for zoning change.
No, 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 they're not, we're not gonna change the zone.
They want a special permit, okay.
So again, that's a big project, and it's gonna be many boards and committees that are gonna be involved in that project. So I know that you are very interested in that project, so I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening. Moving on.
Paul goes to the, sorry, Paul goes to the.
The ZVA, he goes to the planning board. Most of the ZVA meetings have gone, it's a smaller. It'll be at that one tomorrow. The, the senior center and the board of health are holding a booster shot COVID clinic this coming Friday for those individuals that are 65 and older. That'll be from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Pre-registration is required. Fire department system as well. Speaking of fire department, we have two new graduates from the firefighter academy, Robert Fagen and Jacob Hertz, both graduated from the firefighter academy yesterday. They, one, Jacob Hertz is already a paratrooper, and then Robert Fagen is a anti-terrorist. I think the last to report tomorrow morning, it's a very busy morning. Maureen and I, and Joposhu, and Costa, and Detida will be holding our bond rating call tomorrow with S&amp;P, and that begins at 11:00 a.m. So that'll be our opportunity to talk about the strong position the town is with its finances. We are now currently a W A plus, the second highest rating you can have, triple A. We're gonna again try it for triple A, but we're gonna be optimally, cautiously optimistic because the bond rating agencies have told us that they haven't upgraded municipalities during COVID period, because it's difficult to predict the economy moving forward. So the worst-case scenario will stay strong at a double A plus, best-case scenario will move to triple A. So we'll keep you posted on that. Once we complete that progress, then we'll move to, we'll see bids and get a best sense of what we're gonna get from interest rates at 207.
Yep.
And so.
That's what I have in the.
That's it?
Awesome, I just forgot to make my notes. Who were the, you said we have two new firefighters, they passed the firefighter portion of the academy, that's correct. All right, so Robert Fagen. And then there's Jacob Hertz. H U R.
T U.
T U.
Any other discussion? Saying none, I'll extend the motion to adjourn.
Got this. I would make a motion.
You got it?
Yeah, I would make a motion, we adjourn this evening.
Motion.
All in favor? unanimous action?
Nice work.
Should come and deal with it when I give some. Eight double zero.